Again, huh?
Trash bags are for the birds.
They really are. It drives me bananas. Eleven thousand pounds. That's how much trash I throw in this truck every day.
There's a better way to keep Jamestown clean. Let us show you what we can do. Starting spring 2023, we'll put an end to messy trash bags and instead provide a container for you before you have charge. We'll also offer recycling pickup at your curb so you can easily put your can in the No more bags on the street, no more recycling hassle. Just wheel your cans to the curb by 7:00 a.m. on the day of pickup. And that's not the only thing we can do. We're getting new front-load trucks for better visibility so we can see people and traffic much more easily. And by the way, your pickup day will change, but we'll make sure to let you know well in the day.
Man, I love talking trash.
Man, I love these awesome new trucks, especially the bogey item truck.
We can be safer, we can be more convenient, and we can be better for the environment just by switching from bags to cans.
Who's this I call dad?
So be on the lookout next spring for your new cans to arrive. Visit jamestowncando-nc.gov for more information about our new can-do program, including the day of the week for your new pickup.
So, how much training does it take to become a trash collector? Not much. You pick it up as you go along. Cheers.
I'd like to call this meeting to order. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Wolf?
Here.
Councilmember Capes?
Here.
Mayor Montgomery?
Here.
Councilmember Strawn?
Here.
Councilmember Rayburn?
Here.
The quorum is present.
Thank you. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please bow your heads for a moment of silence. Thank you. Counselor, are there any items that need to be added or deleted from the agenda?
I have a few. All right, I'd like to request that the whistleblower policy be removed from the consent agenda, that Budget Amendment Number 16 be added to the consent agenda, that the presentation of Pine Crofts Edgefield Fire Department 46 feasibility study be added to the last item before Old Business, that the Jamestown Park and Golf Course Quarterly Report be removed from New Business, and that the consideration of adoption of 1% discount for early payment of property taxes be added as Item D under New Business.
Do you have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. And Counselor, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second?
On favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Okay, did we have anyone signed up for the first public comment period?
Robert Frederick, 500 Windwood Drive. This week, it's National Volunteer Week, and in light of what's been going on in Jamestown, including the town manager's letter and last week's Jamestown News with some factual inaccuracies, I want to quote the Presidential Resolution establishing National Volunteer Week. As part of that resolution in 1974, the President said, "I call upon all communities throughout the United States to recognize volunteers by observing the week with special ceremonies to honor those who have given countless hours for the betterment of our communities on the American way of life." The American way of life began in protest. It began in part with a recognition of what was unfair. That was the reason for the Battle of Alamance in 1771, and it's part of the rebellion here in North Carolina over issues of unfair taxation and control, and then later, the Boston Tea Party in Massachusetts. And all of that and much more led to the Declaration of Independence, the biggest portion of which, if you read it, is a list of things people protested against but were not heard. So I want to take a moment during this National Volunteer Week to honor my fellow Americans here in Jamestown who have given countless volunteer hours to protest. Community members protested the Diamondback Development Plan. That led in part to Jamestown's planning board, thank you, planning board volunteers, discussing the many flaws of the Diamondback Development Plan. In turn, that, in part, persuaded Counsel, thank you, Counsel, volunteers, to reject the high-density Diamondback Development Plan with its 1,269 housing units. With the D.R. Horton Development Plan, there were even more units, 1,500, and Counsel spent hundreds of thousands of taxpayer dollars to hire an urban designer and a land use attorney to try and fit all of those units in within Jamestown's land use ordinances. They failed. And so, the land use attorney wrote on Jamestown's dime, but on behalf of the developer, proposed changes to Jamestown's land use ordinances, and then persuaded you all to pass them. All of that has prompted sustained protest, which, again, is part of the American way of life and has been since even before America's independence. So I hope you'll join me this National Volunteer Week in recognizing those volunteers who come here to speak. Even those of us who speak in protest, I dare say, are here volunteering for the betterment of our community. Thank you.
Has anyone else signed up to speak?
Nobody else signed up.
Okay, thank you. Matthew, do you have a presentation of the stormwater report?
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. The town is scheduled for an audit of its stormwater system in 2023, this year. As we've discussed in the past, the results of the audit may include some financial commitments to help address the issues that may be identified in the audit. The town has several capital projects that will require financial support to complete and ongoing inspections and education components that are putting pressure on our general fund to maintain. As we've discussed over the past several years, staff are recommending the implementation of a stormwater utility to assist in funding the mandates from the federal and state organizations. Danica Heflin, our Environmental Programs Coordinator at the Piedmont Triad Regional Council, and the Director of Stormwater Smart, is here to present some information on the regulatory requirements the town is required to meet and how a storm utility may assist the town in meeting its obligations. This also represents our Town Council Strategic Plan Goal Number 5.3 to prepare a plan to implement stormwater program to address those federal and state mandates. It's my pleasure to introduce Danica Heflin.
Thank you. Well, hello, Counsel. I want to say thank you to Matthew for inviting me to come. I've had the pleasure of speaking to a couple of city councils since the pandemic concluded and I started getting invitations to go back out, and very recently, I was with the City of Trinity in their council retreat, and we got to talk through some of those issues that they're facing. At the Piedmont Triad Regional Council, we cover 72 member communities, and some of you may be familiar with some of the people I work with there. I'm in the regional planning department. Our director is Jesse Day, or you may know our Executive Director, Matthew Dolch. It's a pleasure working there. It's a pleasure, a sincere pleasure, coordinating the Stormwater Smart program because I get to spend my time with the public. And I want to say, right from the beginning, I am not a regulatory expert. My background is in education. I have a master's in education, and for many years, I worked with the New York Public Library in their family literacy program, building literacy, especially with parents with young children who were not literate in English. And that was such an important opportunity, and I think it really informs how I approach environmental literacy, if you will, because we all have such an important responsibility when it comes to getting to know our surroundings. Many people, I'm sure, moved to Jamestown from other areas, and they're getting to know their neighborhood, they're getting to know the stores and the other resources that are around their home address, whether they're renting an apartment or a house or they're a homeowner. Some people are homeowners for the first time, and they're learning how to take care of a property, how to maintain a home, what they need to do with their yard, what their neighborhood association wants them to do with their yard. People have a lot, a lot, a lot on their minds, and most of our elementary schools in the Piedmont Triad are also Title I schools, so we know that parents have some additional challenges, teachers have additional challenges in helping children and their parents as well to engage in all types of literacy-building activities. So when I go out to an elementary school, or our mayor corps service member Haley goes out to the library to do a summer reading program, we're always approaching things from the perspective of everyone's coming from somewhere and has a whole lot on their plate. And reducing the amount of stormwater pollution that we have in the Cape Fear River Basin may not be the number-one priority on their minds. So I thought this evening, instead of doing a PowerPoint presentation, I would give you some of the materials that I use when I'm speaking to people of all ages, from all neighborhoods in Jamestown, and people who come to Jamestown for things like National Night Out, who may not live here but live nearby, or were just curious. So some of the things that I hand out, I'll refer to. Others, we won't have time, but you can certainly look this when you are.
Thank you.
Ava, when you have a moment?
Thank you.
And as Matthew mentioned, this is all under the topic of budgeting, finances, utility fee, but as we're all taxpayers, I think we can all appreciate that those pennies and those dollars add up, and do we really need another fee on top of everything else? And so partly what I want to do is show you what Jamestown already is receiving under Stormwater Smart Services, but also some additional things that we could support you with if you were to decide to put a stormwater utility fee into place. If you look inside your packets, there's a lot in here, but I thought we could just start out, since we're talking about stormwater, with this small little square brochure right here. And if you will fold that out, it folds out into these four panels here, and you can see litter and trash, pesticides and fertilizers, household hazardous waste, yard waste. If you flip the panels down, you'll see pet waste and vehicle maintenance, and then there's this little, oh, excuse me, there's this poster in the middle. So if you take a look at this, this is one of the pieces of information that we hand out at the library at National Night Out, and it explains to someone whether they are a renter, a homeowner, an animal owner, someone who throws things away, or drives a car, or mows the lawn, what are some things that they need to be aware of that contribute to stormwater pollution? And why, it explains, stormwater pollution is a problem. I think we're all aware that the water might not always look clear or smell wonderful, but we may not think in terms of what that means down the line as far as us having to pay more for our drinking water to clean it and make sure that it's potable, or in terms of recreation. If someone goes out swimming, and every time they go to swim, there's a sign saying it's really not safe to swim in the water today, that affects for me how I feel about my community at large. So pamphlets like this help to explain that. If Stormwater Smart is going into an elementary school or a middle school, we tie this information into the core standards. So the water cycle, what is a watershed? And we want to, by the time they reach high school, start to think like a stormwater manager. If I worked for the county, or the city, or the state of North Carolina, what kinds of decisions would I have to make to balance economic development with environmental preservation? So we play games, like the watershed game, where they get to decide if they're going to implement a stormwater utility fee and that kind of a thing. So all those things are a lot of fun to do, and then there's the fun of just handing things out and giving people things during Guilford Creek Week. If you go into the Jamestown Public Library right now, there are nature notebooks out as well as seeds. Nature notebooks are in honor of Year of the Trail this year, as I'm sure you've all participated in Year of the Trail information sessions or activities. The idea is to get families outside, on the trails, and so many of our trails have waterways that run through them. So as we're out there enjoying nature, can we also enhance that time with our friends and our family to think about what kinds of wildlife live here? What are the bugs in the water that are a part of the food chain? If those bugs can't survive because the water is polluted, what happens to the birds and the turtles and the fish who eat those bugs? So those are the kinds of things that are here in the nature notebook. If you look behind that, there's some deep reading for later, if you want to learn more about the Cape Fear River Basin. And if you look on the other side, there are a few papers right here that illustrate some of the points that Matthew was making earlier. One of the things I've really enjoyed about working for the Regional Council and Stormwater Smart is that I came in at a very interesting time as far as stormwater goes in North Carolina. Based on the Federal Clean Water Act, the state is designated to make sure local governments are complying with stormwater standards and clean water standards, but also that we are enforcing our ordinances, creating ordinances that align with those federal policies. So that puts local governments in a very tight spot. If we were to, let's, we'll try something. This is something that I do with just about any age group, and it feels strange in a city council meeting, but if everyone would just close their eyes for just a moment, and I'll do it too, so you don't feel assily, but think about if you were flying up above Jamestown, way up above, and looking down, and we're talking about the mid-1800s. As you look down, you're mostly seeing green and blue, and if you think of what all goes into that greenery, you know, we have maples and oaks, we have shrubs and vines and native wildflowers and native grasses. All of that green is then intercut with a vein-like series of waterways. And if you open your eyes now and you think about the building that we're in, and this building has a roof and a parking lot, if we were above Jamestown right now, looking down, we would see two colors that weren't there in the mid-1800s. We would see gray and we would see brown. So the impervious surface, that is our parking lots, our roofs, that type of a thing, that's where our stormwater runoff is coming from. The exposed soil for construction that's taking place, areas where people walk or drive that aren't paved, we see exposed dirt, and that dirt is getting into the waterways. If we looked at our water from above, we may see mostly brown, especially after it rains. So the issue really comes down to development, and that makes it seem as though these two things are at odds. Development and the prosperity of citizens, or preserving or conserving that green space and the water. But I love being at the Regional Council because it's about balance. How do we balance these things? So we look for ways to either change some of that gray space and make it green again, to install things like pervious pavement instead of impervious pavement, to put in place stormwater control measures. Have you heard much about things like stormwater ponds? Some people will say wet ponds or dry detention ponds. They might talk about green infrastructure. They might talk about things like rain gardens. All of these things are intended to help balance development with the protection of our natural resources. Everything that it takes to put these things into place is probably minimal when we think about long-term what it's going to take to maintain them, to inspect them, to repair them. There are many, many towns that I visit in the Piedmont Triad where something has gone awry in the process. And I'm thinking of the process of planning, zoning, development. It could be that permits were issued as they should not have been, and there's far more gray space in a new neighborhood than there should be, or a stormwater control measure wasn't mandated to be put into place, or it was, but it hasn't been maintained. So now is the time, after all these years, where the state has required that towns of a certain size and density put into place a stormwater management plan, now the audits have started to occur. During the pandemic, so many things changed, things were shut down, but the one activity that continued were the audits, of course. So I got to be a part of many, many, many audits with the state and with our partners in the triad who were scheduled before Jamestown. So I was really explaining to the state the components of the outreach and education plans. If you look at this page right here with regulatory requirements, in this pie chart, there are six minimum measures listed, and the two that I spend most of my time on are public outreach and education and public participation. So supporting towns in different ways. Each town has its own resources, its own needs, so we look to sort of supplement and fill in gaps where we can so that when the audit occurs, well, one of the reasons when the audit occurs, I can come in and be of real help. I can explain to the state and translate the activities that we've been doing into their language of compliance. But there are four other areas here: illicit discharge, detection and elimination, construction site runoff control, post-construction stormwater management, good housekeeping for municipal operations. It is now the time where towns are needing to confront the areas, especially in these other four, because the state is, they've talked to me so many times that in some cases, they're skipping that part of the audit, but they're focusing very intently on, are the inspections taking place as they should? Are the stormwater control measures being maintained as they should? Are the neighborhoods going in? Is there enough green space there? And are we, as a town, enforcing things that don't comply with the ordinance? So I'll use the City of Lexington as an example. City of Lexington had their stormwater plan in place, but they did not have anyone specifically assigned to stormwater. That's something that really, the audit was sort of a galvanizing moment that helped refresh things and reinvigorate things. So Lexington created some new positions, and they asked Stormwater Smart to come up with a utility bill insert that would help people understand why they needed a stormwater utility fee, how that utility fee is calculated, and why it's so helpful. And so that's what we did. It falls under two categories, we could say this. This is public outreach and participation, but in a way, it's good housekeeping, too. You have, I think here, a nice print example, but I think what made things work in Lexington were public meetings that were held in the park, where I would come, city staff would come, and the time was published, and people would just show up and ask questions about why we need it, why is it important? The bottom line, and I don't spend a lot of time talking about this, because I think motivation for changing behaviors and building literacy within families, that comes from other activities that are positive in nature and not threat-related. However, what really pushes things forward and makes things happen, we can't help but be burned when we see a number, like on the back of this page. Towns, at everybody, every audit that I've attended, there's either a notice of deficiency or a notice of violation. If that is not addressed promptly, and there may be several issued to a town, the civil penalty is $37,500 per day, per violation. And I haven't seen it get here yet, but that's because the state's only halfway through. So far, they've been issuing these NODs and NOVs, and towns are saying, okay, well, what can we do? Here's where we're starting from. We've done a lot to get to where we are. We have litter sweeps, we have a schedule for inspections, we pay a lot of money already to keep our water clean, but it's probably time to start thinking about the next step in whatever form it takes. And the Regional Council is here to help in many different ways. I'm certainly here anytime you have questions for me. I put my business card inside of your packet, and I'd be glad to talk more about things I've seen in other communities, and I really just appreciate having the chance to meet you. I started the job right before the pandemic, and I feel like in some ways, it's my first time really getting to see people and time really getting to see people and get involved in this way. So thank you very much for giving me the time. And I don't know, agenda-wise, I hear you have a lot to get through tonight. I'm certainly available for your questions now. If you need to move on, I completely understand, and I can make myself available later. Any questions at this time, council?
Good for now.
I, I was just gonna say, when I was working for the town, I did our stormwater education and went into the schools and the library, and it was fun working with the kids. They're so receptive, and then they go home and tell their parents, and they have more influence on their parents than anybody else.
It's true. You know, and I think it works in the reverse, too, and I saw this in family literacy. If you have a very young child as a parent, I think, I, I think, in reading your bios, I know you're all involved with the community in different ways and have children, and if you remember how you would translate, or do translate, to your children and your grandchildren, you translate information for them, and you sort of start to own information once you're translating it for your child and you're talking about it together and how you mean. And that's, I think, really how we, we change things or help preserve things. So I, I find the same to be true. It's just really wonderful. Thank you for all that you've done for the environment here in Jamestown, because you've done a lot for a really long time.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Judy, would you introduce our auditor, please?
Evening, mayor and council. Tonight, we have John Frank with Forvis LLP here to present our annual comprehensive financial report for year ended June of '22.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of council. Appreciate you allowing me to join you this evening to review the results of the fiscal '22 financial audit. As a result of our audit, not surprisingly this year, we issued a unmodified or clean audit report. Additionally, we did not have any material weaknesses in internal controls to report as a result of our audit. And once again this year, the town received the certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting from the Government Finance Officers Association. I know this is an award that the towns received many years in a row now. I've, I've lost count of how many years it's been. But each of you should have received a copy of the audit report, as well as a one-page financial summary of, of the results this year. One significant change in this year's report was the adoption of a new accounting standard, which governmental units were all required to adopt. It's known as GASB 87. It's basically the, the, a standard that changed the accounting rules for leases, in which the town is both a lessy and a lessor. And basically, it, it required that operating leases be shown on the, the, the balance sheet, the government-wide balance sheet of, of the town. So a lot of work went into adoption of that standard, and didn't have any impact on your, your fund balance, which you monitor, but on the government-wide balance sheet that's presented in the audit report. There are assets and liabilities that weren't there previously. If you could please direct your attention to the one-page financial summary of this, the summary shows some of the key financial statistics for fiscal '22 compared to fiscal '21, and I'd like to just point out a few items here. Under Roman numeral one, here we've shown the town's cash and investment balances at the end of fiscal '22 compared to fiscal '21. Overall, cash was up $1.7 million year-over-year. In the general fund and other governmental funds, cash is up approximately $716,000, primarily due to the receipt, receipt of ARPA funds, or excuse me, ARPA funds amounted to about $716,000 this year, which accounted for the increase in general and governmental fund cash. Cash in the water sewer fund was also up this year due to an increase in system development fees, as well as there being fewer capital expenditures in the water sewer area in fiscal '22. If you can just continue down that page to Roman numeral two, here we've shown available fund balance in the town's general fund as calculated by the Department of State Treasurer's formula. This represents the portion of fund balances legally available for appropriation. As you can see, available fund balance at the end of fiscal '22 was down around $354,000. This was due primarily to transfers from the general fund to the capital project fund in the amount of approximately $470,000. Under Roman numeral three, we've shown remaining fund balances available for appropriation under the town's fund balance policy, and you can see this amount from a surplus of $372,000, basically to zero at the end of fiscal '22. And, and again, this being primarily explained by transfers from the general fund to your capital project fund for future capital expenditures. Under Roman numeral four, we've shown a summary of the town's general fund revenues by, by source. You can see overall, general fund revenues were up about $290,000 for fiscal '22. All of these categories of revenues were up this year, with the exception of investment earnings, which were down slightly, down by about $13,000 due to there being lower cash balances in the general fund, and of course, interest rates on investments or on excess cash were, were still remain quite low during fiscal '22. The revenue category that showed the highest increase was unrestricted intergovernmental revenues. This was up $136,000 due to an increase in sales tax distributions, probably explained by just an increase in economic activity, as well as the state doing a little better job of monitoring collections, particularly, particularly on online purchases. Under Roman numeral five, we summarized general fund expenditures for fiscal '22 compared to fiscal '21. Overall expenditures were up for the fiscal year by about $278,000, or about 5%. Two of the areas which showed increases were general government and public safety spending. General government expenditures were up about $209,000 primarily as a result of increases in governing body and administrative expenses. Public safety spending was up $110,000. That's due primarily to an increase in police contract expenditures for the year. Then under Roman numeral six, here we've shown the percentage of available fund balance to budgetary basis expenditures for the current and prior years. This percentage at the end of fiscal '22 was 57%, which represents a decrease from last year. Again, a lot of this is explained by, you know, fairly significant transfers that were made from the general fund to your capital project funds. You can see this percentage is below the state average for similar-sized municipalities, but well above the state minimum of 8%. So you're not, you know, close to being near that state minimum percentage. Then under Roman numeral seven, we've shown the change in net position for the water and sewer fund. For the year, net position for the water sewer fund increased by about $930,000, this being due to an increase in, in revenues, as well as there being fewer capital expenditures in fiscal '22 compared to fiscal '21. If you recall, in fiscal '21, the water sewer fund had significant improvements made to the East Side wastewater treatment plant, as well as to the Riverdale Pump Station. And then finally, under Roman numerals eight and nine, we've shown some statistics on the town's property taxes. You know, once again, uncollected property taxes at the end of the fiscal year remained very close, very, very low, and close to 100% of the current year levy was collected. So again, excellent results in property tax collections. So those were the only items I wanted to review with you, but I'd be glad to answer any questions that you might have about the financial results or the audit.
Any questions?
Not at this time.
Thank you so much.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Chief Carson, would you introduce your feasibility study for Station 46?
So while this loading, in 2000, at the end of 2001, we completed a station location study, and looking at the fire station's location, with also the, the current deployment of, of that, the resources that we pull out of there, as well as the growth throughout the, the town, to make sure that the fire station was still in the, in the right location that it needed to be, and that study proved that it was exactly right in line with what it needed to be. So as we're looking throughout our facility master planning overall, with all of our facilities, we looked at Station 46 as well, and wanted to look at that and make sure that that station would meet the needs of, of where we currently are, and also where we're planning to go, or, and as growth happens over the next 40 years, 40, 50 years for that building. That building, our staffing in, in that station has changed significantly since 2001, when the station was built. At that time, the staffing wasn't what it is now. Now there's five to eight people there a day, where that wasn't before. So we wanted to consider all that and look at the station overall, and see what, what may need to be, may, may need to be done. So we, we partnered with Stuart Cooper Newell Architects to come in and do a study of the station, a feasibility study, space, space needs study, to see what, what the station proved overall from an architectural standpoint, and they, and I'll let their representative go through that tonight, to kind of show you what that study showed, showed, and, and what came out of that. And so Ken Newell with Stuart Cooper Newell, I'll turn it over to him and let him go through that study.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Hi.
Thank you for letting me be here with you tonight. I appreciate the opportunities, appreciate you joining us tonight. It's a beautiful day in Jamestown. I won't take long. I think you've all got a copy of the presentation, so I'll, I'll just briefly touch on some of the items that are found in the presentation, so that you'll have a better feel for what's taking place. Again, what we worked on as we moved forward with this, a little bit about our firm, so you, you probably have never heard of us before, but we're based right here in North Carolina. We do a lot of work across the area. This is the type of work we do, and established in 1971. I hope you can look at me and tell I haven't been there that long, but I'm looking more like it every day. But we've got quite a number of people. The rest of the statistics on this chart basically says this type of study or assessment is what we do a lot of. As far as we know, we work on more fire station projects than anyone in the United States, and we're based right here in North Carolina, as you can tell from my accent. But, and, and by the way, the colored map just reflects where states where we have worked on or are working on stations. If you've got relatives in Alabama, I'd appreciate a reference and like to color in that part of the state as well. But this is what we do a lot of, is this type of study. As far as your study is concerned, it's a very brief, but compacted study that identifies a couple of paths of, of investigation. One is to look at the existing conditions of the building and see, how is it holding up after 22 years? What are some of the things that ought to be brought to attention for repair or maintenance? And if you needed to expand use of the building, how that works? The other track that we looked at is what the needs of the station are, and I'll, I'll briefly touch on that. For instance, the existing building conditions, we were able to come in and produce some CAD drawings of the floor plan, so that now you've got CAD, you'll know how to project the use of the building and any planning around that, and looked at it as a global setting as well. The study itself looked at a couple of different ways of components. So the evaluation of the facility conditions, we looked at some of the negatives of the building, we looked at all the positives of the building. The good news is, is as a 22-year-old building goes, it's got pretty strong bones, is the way we put it. So it's in pretty good shape. There's a lot of good aspects about it. For instance, the roof is in really great condition. There appears to be no signs of roof leaking, which is normally where you'd start seeing failure early in a building of this age, but the roof is well-maintained, no active problems there. The interior finishes are in fair condition, and in a fire station, it falls into the category of one of the commercial buildings that gets used 24/7. So typically, the finishes are the things that start deteriorating first, because they're, they're so used, they're so touched. But the finishes could use some loving and attention, but they're in pretty good condition as we look at the building. Then we looked at some of the negative aspects, and again, I'm not covering all the pros or all the cons, just giving you a highlight of some of those. Some of the problem areas of the building is a masonry building that is now 22 years old, could stand to good pointing up, going in any of the cracked joints that are there, taking care of those, pointing them up, sealing those conditions. If it's on the outside of the building, not related to the interior envelope or the exterior envelope of the building, it's not as problematic, because water intrusion in those areas don't cause serious problems, they need to be addressed. But if it's on a wall that is on exterior wall condition, then you want to address those as quickly as possible. So there are some areas that need to be addressed. One of the challenges of the building is, for a visitor or someone new to the area, you gotta guess where you're supposed to go in, because there's multiple entry points of this building, and you might not be able to know where you're going in. Now, that seems like a simple problem, and then, but if, if on a fire station, if you don't clearly tell people where to park, they will park in front of the apparatus bays when they're visiting. So you wanted a clear public point of entry. The other problem that creates for the firefighters is security. Again, people don't know where they're supposed to come into the building. You want one point of public entrance for the building, and as you can tell, if you've ever been in the station from the photos, there's not a good visual from the inside to the outside at any of these, so you, you basically gotta open the door to find out who wants in, which is, in this day and time, not always the best idea. So there is some security challenges on the building as well. Some of the other challenges are reflected in the apparatus bays themselves. Generally, it's in pretty good condition, but because of the age of the building, for instance, the apparatus bay doors are 13 by 13 doors. The standard for a long time now has been 14 by 14. For whatever reason, apparatus tends to get larger, not smaller, and so you've got challenges on what kind of equipment you can house in this existing station, and still be able to fit into some of those conditions as well. And some of the ceiling tiles, you'll see from the photos there, ceiling tiles that were not really designed to be moisture-resistant ceiling tiles, they're being used in that, so they're starting to deteriorate in the apparatus bays themselves. One of the other problems would be the ADA. It does, this station, any station is required to meet the standards of the ADA. I know that doesn't make a lot of sense to a lot of people. You fairly rarely have firefighters in wheelchairs, but it applies to more than just wheelchair folks as well. So there's a lot of things, particularly about the wet areas, the toilets and shower rooms, and even the kitchen area, that don't meet the ADA. If you ever touch those areas through renovations or additions, again, you would be required to bring those up to code, and really, there's a lot of problems about it not meeting code, either back a slide to the entries, some of those entries don't meet handicap code as well. So we, we looked at some of these areas. One of the bigger challenges, and don't, don't worry, I'm about to wrap up the evaluation part. One of the bigger challenges was the space. The chief talked about how much they've had to add to the staffing needs of the station. So even just the kitchen itself is so small, doesn't meet the ADA requirements, and is very tight for the number of people that goes into that. Which that leads to the second path, not just the facility evaluation, but the second path that we evaluated, which is, what does the Jamestown Pine Cross Sedgefield Station ought to, what does, what does it need to do? How does it need to function? How big does it need to be? At the end of the day, we're trying to find out what size this station needs to be. So what we did is looked at a programming effort. This is where you build the building room by room, words on paper, so that we'll know what the functions are. There's a lot of things that go into a program. As we, I tell people, it's the most important document in a construction project or a design project, because it identifies all your needs. Some of the things that are taken into consideration there is not just the functionality of how the building needs to function, but also to meet some of the codes. I mentioned the ADA, but the building codes need to be satisfied. NFPA standards that are currently in place or about to come in place have a lot to say for decontamination areas and things that you need to incorporate by requirement into the building itself. Other things that we consider is what some of the community needs not be. For instance, this program has a meeting room in it that could house not just training for the firefighter, but it could house overflow events that the city or the community may need. I believe it's got a 30-person training room in there with tables and chair scenario, or if it was just chairs, it could house up to around 50 people in that training room as well. So it takes a lot of things into consideration in looking at the program needs. As you can see from this chart, the program needs of this building are at 17,495 square feet. The current station is 7,520 square feet, so you're roughly half the projected size of what the facility would be if you programmed and built a new one today. The goal for any project on a brand-new station would be to get an additional 50 to 75 years worth of lifespan out of a good, a well-designed and good, a good-built facility. On a renovation and addition project, if that's what is decided to go for in this project, you would expect to get somewhere between 35 to 55 more years out of a facility like this. So it's, it's got a great investment associated with it. Also, what we looked at at that time is, okay, how could we satisfy those program requirements? And we looked at a multitude of options on the site that it's already there. You've got copies of those. I really just wanted to kind of point out a couple of the ones that the fire department and we kind of lean towards based on the flexibility associated with them. Here is an towards based on the flexibility associated with them. Here is an option that shows if you were to keep the existing apparatus bays and then to demolish the remainder of the building and build that out larger. So, you can see what that option would look like. It starts to take a little bit more of the parking lot that's out in front between here and the fire station itself, but it is something that is feasible to do that. You'll notice that it says this building is only 16,415 instead of the 15, of the 17,4 that I mentioned earlier. The difference is, is we've made use of the existing bays in their smaller size here. So, you could change those out and build the base bigger. There's enough property there to elongate those and build those bigger, but this is trying to conserve as much as possible there. One of the other options and the one that I'll show you tonight is if it were a brand-new building on a brand-new site or on a demolished building, a brand-new building on the existing site, what would that look like? How much land would it take? What would the size of the building be? And so, this shows a very generic site of a, anywhere from two and a half to three acres, building that full 17,495 square feet on it on one floor. Obviously, if you went up, it would reduce the amount of land used for something like that. However, your construction cost per square foot goes up when you go vertical with the building instead of setting it out as well. So, that's kind of the reader's digest version of the study there. I'm glad to answer any questions that you may have and really appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you. Any questions?
I'm just gonna say, this is a very thorough report.
Thank you.
But I, I noticed on, on a lot of these things in this report, there, there, a lot are some easy fixes on, on maintenance.
Yes, ma'am.
And I guess I was wondering, our public service staff, our guys are so talented, if those are some things that our guys could address. I guess Paul is over there if he heard me. Yeah, I'll see a hand. Did you hear my question?
Yes.
Instead of contracting it out?
Yes, I've, I've not read the study.
Okay.
But certainly our guys, they are highly skilled and it's mostly a function of time in prioritizing work.
But then I did read one statement that says a hot water heater needs to be replaced immediately.
So, we have addressed that issue since the study.
Oh, great, okay. All right. Thank you.
Yeah, I was just gonna comment. It's a very detailed home inspection.
I know, very, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Matthew, moving on to old business, would you present the adoption of the comprehensive operation review of the golf course and parks?
Yes, ma'am. As you're aware, the town's council strategic plan, goal number 1.5, directed the staff to perform a pay classification study. This is to help ensure that the town is safeguarding one of its key assets, and that's our staff. This will help ensure that the town remains competitive in our marketplace as an employer, and historically, the town has completed pay classifications on a five-year interval.
Matthew?
Yeah.
I think I'm, I think we're one item ahead, the golf course.
Yeah.
Thank you. It wasn't me for a change.
I'm jumping ahead of you. I had to go turn the lights on and I just jumped right on ahead. I apologize. We'll get back to that one.
Oh, yeah.
Thanks. She's gonna turn the lights off in just a second, hopefully before, not before I introduce Richard. Going back to the golf strategic plan, the town hired the National Golf Foundation Consulting to assist the town in helping us prepare a strategic plan for our golf course facility. The goal was to help evaluate the golf course's long-term potential sustainability and then to help the town properly evaluate the future of the property. The town is seeking to better understand the physical requirements and the business practices that are needed to sustain golf at this location. The impetus for this plan derived from our own strategic plan, which is goal number 5.8. Specifically, National Golf Foundation was asked to perform a very high-level review of our market and specifically of the Jamestown Park Golf Course. Our primary objective is to identify the best business practice recommendations for operations, staffing, pricing, capital improvements, and potential new revenue opportunities, which would help aim our, our goal of increasing the financial performance of our municipal golf course. The National Golf Foundation and its consulting division have a lot of experience throughout the country in working with the public sector to help identify economic performance of golf course assets, implement the most appropriate changes, and to maximize our economic performance. In addition, National Golf Foundation has very, has quite a few municipal clients around the country, but most notably, they just completed a 2022 engagement with the town of Mooresville here in North Carolina. The plan was introduced to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, who voted to recommend that the town council consider the adoption of the plan and then to begin work with the staff to implement the plan at the golf course. It's my pleasure to introduce Richard Singer. Richard first joined the National Golf Foundation Consulting Staff in 1989, just a couple of years ago, after completing his finance MBA at the University of Florida, was named the Director of Consulting Services in 1997 and Senior Director in 2015. Mr. Singer has successfully managed the National Golf Foundation's well-known golf consulting practice with an industry-respected track record of success and a reputation for delivering projects on time and on budget. Mr. Singer is now widely viewed as the leading municipal golf facility consultant in the United States. So, without further ado, I'll introduce Richard. Thanks.
Thank you, Matt. How do I top that? That was a, that was a good introduction. Glad to, to be here and have an opportunity to, to present to you all. I know that a lot of you are maybe seeing me and meeting me for the first time, and I want you to know that you all have been a big part of my life for the last couple of months, even though you may not have known it, as I, as I work through this. This, this has been a very fulfilling and interesting project, and you have a lot to be proud of with golf in Jamestown. For a small town like Jamestown to have this kind of municipal golf asset is something really to be proud of, but I think you're also starting to learn how challenging it is to operate a municipal golf course anywhere in the country. And a lot of the issues, problems, recommendations and all of that that we gave you in the report that we delivered to you are very common around the country. I mean, just about every municipality that I work with has a lot of similar challenges. For those of you who don't know, I mean, the National Golf Foundation has been around for a long time, and this is a big part of what we do, you know, so kind of welcome to our world. I know that, that you all know the Jamestown Park Golf Course very well. That's your community golf course, but my life is going around the whole country and looking at all the different towns and cities and counties and their golf courses. And I see a lot of commonalities with Jamestown Park, but there's also a lot of things that are unique to Jamestown Park, some of them positive too. As, as Matt mentioned, I mean, the purpose of the engagement was to really, in a nutshell, to help you get your arms around this asset, to really understand what it is that you have with the golf course here in Jamestown, what is it capable of doing, what is it not capable of doing, and a little bit about what it needs in terms of ongoing maintenance and operations as well as some capital improvements. And we've tried to identify that for you. Some strategies for the future, some ideas about how to market and promote the property to bring more people in and to try to make it more of a community asset and that can serve more than just golfers. We had several layers of activities and research that we did in conjunction with this. A lot of meetings here at, at Town Hall as well as at the golf course over the course of the engagement while we were here in the fall of 2022, and also some additional phone and Zoom meetings throughout the process to really help us understand this property in detail. We've got the, a lot of data and information from the town and from the golf course about how they're operating, how they're performing. We did thorough inspection of the property, the equipment, the buildings, and really, you know, to give you a, a full condition of property report, which we have done as part of the review that we've delivered to you. And the ongoing work at NGF, the information that we're collecting from all these other municipalities allowed us to benchmark you and to show you how you compare to other municipal golf courses, both locally and around the country. I mean, the general findings, I think, are pretty straightforward. You know, it's, it's a good location for a golf course along the river and all of that. I mean, it's a really nice piece of property and it's, it's a great golf course that has, has potential for great appeal. And the amenities that you have there, the clubhouse, the golf course, and all of that together is a very common mix of components that works well for municipal golf. But I think the challenge is it's a small town, the town of Jamestown, and I think in order to be successful economically, you're going to have to attract people who aren't local. You're gonna have to bring them in from a wider area. You've got to create a destination appeal at the Jamestown Park Golf Course, and I think that that has service profile issues as well as physical space issues that we've tried to identify for you. We think that the marketing could be improved at this property. We did identify some specific capital improvements that we estimated totaled, you know, some 800,000 to 1.1 million. And, you know, I understand the priorities of a small town like Jamestown, especially listening to the, the fire, you know, station, a presentation that came just before me, and I understand how that, how challenging that can be when you look at numbers like this for a golf course. But I think a lot of it relates to deferred maintenance, that the ongoing maintenance of the property has been deferred, and some of these items have basically been developed over time, that it didn't, you didn't just wake up one morning and have some of the problems that we've observed out there. They've come from a, from a long period of challenges in your maintenance. And one of the key ones is irrigation efficiency, which I think was also a part of a, a presentation I heard earlier tonight, you know, about water management in your community and making sure that you're not wasting and that the irrigation of a golf course is, is done properly and with the most modern equipment, which I think is another key piece of the investments that we've identified for your golf course. Other things relate to service quality related to the food and beverage operation. I think there's more there, there's more potential there in the food and beverage operation at this golf facility, you know, than you're realizing. And we also did a survey of your users, a pretty extensive and thorough survey of your users, and your users basically indicated that they're very, they're very happy with the property, but they identified a couple of key areas that are problematic. And some of them relate to the capital investments that I just mentioned, the condition of the bunkers, the condition of cart paths, things like that. And they're also concerned about the food and beverage operation there. And they, a lot of them are basically said to us in the survey that they just don't eat there anymore. They just don't use it anymore. They're very concerned about, about that. Operating a golf course presents many challenges to a community, and one of the things we tried to help identify for you is the external environment, what we call the things you can't control in operating a golf course. I mean, the, the town of Jamestown is in the golf business, and it's a tough business to be in, and you're at the mercy of a lot of things that you can't control. And one of them is supply and demand and the balance between supply and demand. And it seems favorable in the greater Greensboro, in the Piedmont Triad market. I think that there are more golfers per golf course here than in other markets that we study. So, there is potential for the Jamestown Park Golf Course to, to generate more revenue and be more successful than it is, but the condition of property has to match that. The average rounds played, the golf, rounds of golf that are sold at the Jamestown Park Golf Course was much lower than the other competitors in the market, and we feel that that was a reflection of the product quality, the condition of the property. And a lot of times, you know, that, that can get worse over time, and that seems to be one of the things that we saw happening. And, you know, the, the inflationary world that we live in has really hit golf harder, I think, than other industries. The cost to maintain and operate golf facilities has really been hit hard in the last couple of years, and I'm sure you've experienced that here in, in Jamestown Park Golf Course. And the normal reaction to that is to push green fees higher, to make the golfer pay a little more for the service, which we did recommend in our report, but there are some limitations with that when you consider the competitive environment. So, there is some room to increase fees, and there were some specific recommendations we had about that that were contained in the report. A couple of items that I wanted to point out to you related to conditions, you know, and things that, that we felt needed to be addressed on the golf course. Certainly, the bunkers, this was a, you know, a picture of one of the golf, the sand bunkers on the golf course. You can see the lining is exposed. These are not playable conditions, and this is something that's important to golfers, and they're gonna seek another golf course if they can't get the conditions that they like. The cart path conditions, it creates a very uncomfortable ride for the golfers who are riding in those golf carts, and a lot of times, they'll go off the cart path and drive on the grass because the conditions like this, you know, make your teeth chatter. And, you know, so it, it damages the turf when they're riding more on the grass. And I'm a long, a, a longtime believer in cart path equalling revenue. Good cart path system leads to better revenue at golf courses. The on-course facilities were also a problem. I believe that, that you have made some improvements to that since this has been done, as well as some other issues related to turf quality, which I think has a, a sign of maintenance, and I think some improvements have been made there as well. I also wanted to point out the kitchen in your clubhouse because this picture, this is it. This is the entirety of the kitchen, essentially, the, the cooking and food preparation facilities that you have in a nice, well-presented grand clubhouse with a lot of space for events and gatherings and luncheons and parties, and yet you've got to run it all through a kitchen of this size. And one of the recommendations that we made was to improve this and to expand this. There's real opportunity for revenue growth in your clubhouse operation, and the report that we've delivered, I think, documents that for you, that investment in your clubhouse will come back to you in improved revenue. And I think that that was one of the important things we wanted to, to make sure we brought out. Our report details these numbers in a little more thoroughness, but this was kind of a summary of it. And again, I mean, I understand the fiscal priorities of a small town like Jamestown, but you have a golf facility and it, it, it needs, it needs catch-up. A lot of the monies that we are recommending for investment are related to catching up on deferred maintenance that has been deferred for five, seven, 10 years. So, it's really just sort of catching up on the bunkers, fixing the cart paths, improving irrigation, and then maybe considering some clubhouse enhancement investments, improving that kitchen, getting more banquets and parties and weddings and all of that into that clubhouse, which is very possible, and there is a market for that in the area, which we've documented for you, but it's gonna take some investment on the, and commitment on the part of the town to do it. So, I hope I didn't race through that too quickly. I wanted to get to your, your questions. But in summary, I think that the way we see the situation with the Jamestown Park Golf Course and our recommendations to the town is that you complete the capital projects over the next five years to try to kind of spread out some of the cost so that you don't get hit with it all at once. You know, work to improve that food and beverage concession. We recognize some of the limitations that the town has related to its financing and what you can and can't do with that food and beverage concession, but if there's anything you could do, you know, to entice some type of private partnership there, I've seen that work very well with a lot of municipalities. And in fact, as I indicated in the report, the most common form of operation for municipal golf courses in the country is for the town to self-operate the golf operation and to have a private partner for their food and beverage operation. You also, you know, we recommend that, that you enhance the technology and the marketing expertise that you have out there. They're currently using platforms, technology platforms at the golf course that have modules that are much more in-depth and can provide much greater level of tech marketing than it's currently being used. Marketing a golf course in 2023 is all about technology. It's about what, you know, information you can share with your customers that they can look at on their, on what's in their pocket. And that's really where marketing a golf course is in 2023, and I don't really see that at Jamestown Park Golf Course. I think you need to start thinking about the next generation of golfers, the younger people in Jamestown and in the area around Jamestown, the youth, the, the children and also young adults, to engage them more at the property and to bring them in, to liven the place up a little bit, to make it more appealing to younger people to come in and want to learn how to play golf and be a part of the golf facility. And I think that that's essentially the summary of, of what we had, had recommended for it. It's, it's a great property and has great potential, but it's, you know, in a small town, and you've got to make it appealing so that it can attract from a wider area. And I think that that's kind of in the, in the, the short summary of what we saw with that property. So, with that, I'm, I'm happy to, to answer your questions about it. Thank you.
What, how would you propose going about the, the kitchen area? What, what would you, you know, you talked about making changes there. What changes would you suggest?
I think the first thing is that, you know, the hood needs to be expanded so that you have better grill capacity and you can widen your menu of offerings and also additional heat storage for people who maybe who want to cater from the outside, you can, you can do a better job of warming meals that You can, you can do a better job of warming meals that may come in from the outside. There is space behind the wall of this kitchen photo. You, you go right around the corner, there's sort of like a dishwashing area and some cold storage, but it's a lot of space that's mostly underutilized and that there is potential and there is space available to expand the kitchen. But I think you want to expand the cooking capacities there so that you can widen your menu, improve the quality of food that's being offered and be able to, uh, service larger parties and events that have, you know, even 100, 150 persons coming in and all dining at the same time. That really can't be accommodated with what you have there now.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Uh, well, I was just gonna ask a few things.
Okay, can I do one housekeeping thing?
Yeah.
Before, before we ask any more?
Madam Mayor, I have a family death that I need to attend a funeral tonight with or a visitation. May I be excused?
Uh, counsel, do I have a motion to excuse?
Yeah, I'm making a motion to excuse counsel in strong.
Second?
On favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Sorry for the interruption, but he needed to leave.
Um, well, of course, another, another one, this is another thorough report. I read it twice because I tried to retain it all. But in several things that you pointed out, we've had on our CIP such as the drainage system, the cart pass and the bunker construction, so those aren't new to us.
Right.
But I did wonder, you spoke a lot about the technology and the marketing, but does the current software that the town, the clubhouse is using, the golf course is using, does it have those elements that are needed to do that marketing that you speak of?
Yes, I believe that they do. And the modules that, that you have contracted for do include a whole email program and a website design program and, and all of that.
And then the, what is it, the search engine organization?
Search engine optimization.
We're more exposed, so to speak.
Yes. I, I would only finish it up by saying that some training might be in order for your staff. I think was something that we had identified to make sure that they understand the depth of what's available to them.
Okay. And I did want to say, it seemed to me in reading this that most of it says, you know, the course is in pretty good shape and, and, and fees are appropriate. You know, it wasn't like horrible. But the survey, or at least what I read, was not good results. There were not kind words about it. And these were from people local, for the most part, people using it. So what exactly do, why do you think that is? Why there were such a negative results from the survey?
Yeah, some of it, I think it relates to a couple of things. And one of the things that we did with the survey is we were able to divvy it up between your regular players, the Jamestown locals who play it all the time, and people who only played it occasionally. And what we found is the ones who play it more often are the ones that were more negative about it. The people that come in and just play it once or twice, they liked it. It's the ones that play it all the time. And I think they probably have more of a frame of reference and remember its history. They've been playing it for years and years and years, and it's not as nice as it used to be. And I think that that's probably a lot of what drives that.
Well, and then this was just, I was wondering, we were talking about the food and beverage and, and the kitchen. And of course, because like you stated, the financing that's in place, we cannot do the vendor concession rental agreement at this time. So I was trying to think of ways to improve that food and beverage at no cost to the town. And you're talking about looking at younger folks, this next generation and livening it up and bringing... Well, okay, I want to ask you just this, this is crazy, I'll, I'll think off the wall. But you've seen all these golf courses, so maybe you would understand, especially for, let's say, golfers that are coming, because the grill's not opened all the time that the course is open. So golfers, let's say they have an early tee time for breakfast. Or when they make that turn, and I'm not a golfer, but they make the turn from the front to the back nine. These food services like DoorDash and delivery services, have you ever seen where maybe the golf course has, the golf course is not involved in it, but they have a designated place for the food delivery and the golfers themselves could call and have that delivered for their breakfast? Or when they have their tee time? And the town's not involved in it because the person, they make the calls, they pay by the phone, but the town has a designated place for the delivery?
I haven't really seen that. That's an interesting idea. But what I have seen, and that I have seen work well in some places, I, I do see communities and cities and towns utilize food trucks a lot at their golf facilities, where they invite private vendors to come in with their food trucks and set them up either in the parking lot or near the clubhouse, whatever, in order to provide that service. Most recently where I saw it was one of the cities local to me in Florida. They did it when the clubhouse was under construction.
Right.
Because they were, they, the whole food and beverage was closed for a clubhouse renovation and they invited the food trucks in and it was so successful for them and the golfers loved it.
Yeah.
That they wanted to consider ways that they might keep some of those vendors in place. But, but, but your idea also ma- makes a lot of sense. I mean...
Some way to, to expand it without any cost at, at this time. I mean, that's probably more of a temporary thing, although a lot of people use that type of service.
Well, ultimately, you know, I, I always used to say on the golf side that it ultimately ties back to an individual that you have running and managing the place. And whether you have them on a concession, a pro shop concession, or they, or they're a town employee, if you have the right person, they can make it work. And it's probably the same is true for a food and beverage operation. So if you can't do it as a concession, if you can find the right person as a town employee who can really sort of take ownership of that and say, I want to make this a great service, you know, I think that, I think it could be vastly improved. The, the upside potential for that is, is strong, even with the existing kitchen, but would be even stronger with an improved kitchen.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, counsel?
Oh, and I guess Jamie has seen this report with everything about the, uh, the greens and the tees and the bunkers and the light edges and stuff? Yes, okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Matthew. Now we can talk about pay classifications.
I thought I'd take this opportunity to skip over the pay classification. Well, back to what I was saying a few minutes before. Thank, thank you very much to Richard for coming. He, he came all the way from Florida.
Madam Mayor. Sorry to interrupt.
I'm sorry.
Um, I think we were supposed to discuss the adoption of that plan?
I am so sorry.
No problem.
Any further information needed, counsel, before we ask for a motion to adopt that plan?
Everything was very helpful. I know I, you know, you, you're, you live here and, and we work around it and we hear, you know, the problems and the successes that the course has had. But this is very nice to have outside eyes who, you know, look at this all the time, be able to come in. And, you know, I, I found this very helpful and very comfortable with it, so I appreciate that. And so I move to adopt the golf course strategic plan and direct the town manager to work with staff to identify key elements of the plan for implementation.
Second?
On favor?
Aye.
I'll oppose. Thank you.
Thank you for, to Katie for keeping us on track with that order of business. But thank you very much to Richard for coming. He came all the way from Florida to be with us this evening, so I appreciate everything he's done for the town. To continue with what I was saying earlier, the town engaged with the MAPS group to help assist with the completion and the review of its pay, pay scales and review of its personnel manual to help ensure competitiveness in our marketplace and compliance with personnel law changes at federal and state level. We do this on a five-year interval. And it is my pleasure to introduce Cheryl Brown. And Cheryl joined the MAPS group in 2018, currently serves as the vice president and spent the majority of her career, 24 years, with the city of Charlotte. She retired in 2017 as the director of human resources. So she's been around the block a time or two with these types of things. She also served six years as the director of human resources for the city of Monroe and has over 20 years of senior management experience in human resources administration operations, providing management consultant services to the city of, of, of city councils, city managers, department directors and employees. So without further ado, I'll let Cheryl come and give you an overview of our pay classification. I will ask you, we had talked about whether or not this should be adopted this evening. I would ask you that, that this just be for, for information this evening. We'll probably look at adopting this at our May meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Matthew. Good evening, mayor and counsel. It's always good to get back up in front of a mayor and counsel, and I like the smaller ones as opposed to the larger. Thank you for having me. What I'm here tonight to talk with you about is the work that we've done. The MAPS group has done for the town of Jamestown. I have an affinity for your town because my grandmother lived in High Point for many, many years. So I came, came through here a lot as a, a young girl. But just to give you a little bit of history, Matthew gave you my quick overview, my bio. The MAPS group has been in business since 1983. We are a preferred vendor with the North Carolina League of Municipalities. The league used to do this type of work and then they decided they wanted to get out of that business. So they were looking for someone to, to have do the work for them. And the MAPS group was formed in 83 with either current or retired HR directors at the state, the local and the county, or the city and the county level. So there's a lot of expertise in the group, a lot of people that are a lot smarter than I am. But we have a good resource for cities and towns across the state. So a little bit about the components of the work that we're doing for you. As Matthew mentioned, we've come in to first conduct a classification and pay study, look at your salary ranges and your job titles and classifications and assess those against the market. Another piece of that would be to do the same thing for your benefits plan. And then the third piece is a review of the personnel policy and procedures, again, to make sure that they are compliant with current federal, state regulations and HR best practices. So we've, we've gone through that process as well. And that will be the second piece of the puzzle that we will bring to you along with any recommendations for benefit changes. So those, those are the components of the work that we're doing for you. And then a little bit about the, the process that we use. And there's a lot of employee involvement in what we do and a lot of council involvement. And y'all are to be commended and we thank you for recognizing the need to keep your pay plans current because in today's market especially, we're all competing for good employees and we're all wanting to maintain and retain the employees that we have on staff. So what you've done is, is really good and your commitment year after year to make adjustments in your pay ranges based on cost of living, market adjustments, those sorts of things, you're really, you really are to be commended because I have worked with some councils across the state that may do one of these. One group I worked with, they did one in 2015. They set their pay ranges from men to max and they didn't touch it again until I was back in there in 2021. So when that happens, you fall very far behind your competitive market. And you, you suffer with recruitment and retention. So thank you for, for your work and commitment. The first part of the process that we did was actually an employee orientation. I came to Jamestown at, at the golf course and met with a good many of your employees and explained the process to them. And during that presentation, asked them for a big favor because the second piece of the puzzle is the completion of the prescript, the prescription, the position description questionnaires, or PDQs for short. And those are, those are not short forms. They are, they're lengthy and they ask for the employee to, to give us a lot of information. So they were, they were great about getting those completed. Once those were done, it was up to me to look through those and analyze those. And then I actually came back, well, not came back to Jamestown, but through Zoom, had meetings with the majority of your workforce and dove into those PDQs a little bit further, asked some follow-up questions. Inevitably, somebody will say, I forgot to tell you about X, Y, or Z. So it also gives the employee the opportunity to bring up some things with me as the, the consultant to make sure it gets included. And then from the position description questionnaires, what I did was prepare a summary report. And I'm gonna, I know you have information in front of you and I believe your page numbers begin on 152. And I'm not going to go into detail on the summary report. If you're looking for something to make you a little drowsy tonight, feel free to read through this. It's 18 pages of really thumbnail sketches of the work that your employees perform for you here in Jamestown. So the summary report is prepared from the position description questionnaires as well as the employee interviews. And then from the summary report, we worked with the town to develop the proposed titles for the jobs. In most instances, those are the same. There were some, just a couple that, that may have changed. And then we go to the market. We've worked with Matthew and the, the management team here in Jamestown to determine who we wanted to speak to and who we wanted to, to survey related to positions that were similar to the ones that, that you have here in Jamestown. So let me take you, if we can, to page 168. And that will give you the overview of the folks we surveyed, and I'll just review those quickly. But it was Archdale, Clemmons, Elon, Gibsonville, Greensboro, High Point, Lexington, Thomasville, Winston-Salem, Forsyth County and Guilford County. And you all are in such a phenomenal location because you've got really, really great towns and cities and progressive towns and cities around you. So it made, made the work that we do quite enjoyable. And then from these towns and cities, we put our salary survey together. And then we looked at the results of the salary survey and worked with Matthew, again, and the management team to say, okay, this looks like where the majority of your positions are going to fall related to the competitive market around you. And where that ended up for you all was about a, a 4% adjustment in your pay ranges that you have in place. And that is consistent with what we've been seeing across the state. Three and a half, I've got a couple of folks that are recommending eight. So it does vary. It depends on from where you're starting and where you need to be. So again, you all are in a really good spot as it relates to the, the pay data that we found. And then we develop a new salary schedule for you and then a new pay plan. And that's also included in your information. We'll go through that in a second. And then from that information, we cost out what it would be for the town to move your employees through the implement, state, implementation strategy that we are recommending. So I do need to take you now to page 169. And let's talk about the recommended implementation strategy. We are recommending that the new salary schedule for Jamestown, again, be approximately 4% above where, where you are now. And having knowledge of the town's history of granting the cost of living increases in conjunction with movement in your ranges, we think that'll marry nicely with a, a potential 4% cost of living adjustment that I think the manager and finance office is working on. And then once those, any cost of living increases would be granted for your workforce, then implement the results of the study. And what we do with the study, we want to make sure that everybody at least is at the new minimum of the salary ranges that we proposed. So that's step one. And then we look at an implementation strategy that, if you may have a little bit of compression with your, your pay for your employees, which you all don't, again, you're to be commended for that, we recommend an implements, implementation strategy to move folks into the range based on the number of years that they've currently served in their roles. So for you all, what we've recommended is 0.75% per year of service in their current position. And all of this is detailed for you there in the report. And the initial cost to implement the results of the study is, is about 15.5. And I can tell you again, that's pretty phenomenal because I see a lot in the 87, 90, 150 range. So you, you have maintained your, your pay and your employee salary base in a, in a very positive manner. And really that's it for the report. The other couple of pieces of information that you have there includes a, a salary schedule, a new salary schedule for the various grades here at the town. That's on page 170. And then finally, we provided the list of classifications by grade, which is where you'll see the job titles of the various positions that you have here at the town and where those have been placed in the new pay grades, their new assignments on pay grades. And that really, I didn't want to take up a whole lot of your time because I know you have a long meeting tonight, but I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. Or again, if you think of any, once I'm gone, I'm available to all of you.
I had just a couple of things. On the other municipalities that you used as comparison?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I thought in the past we had included Oak Ridge and Stokesdale because they're closer to the population of Jamestown. You know, Jamestown cannot compete with High Point, Greensboro, Guilford County. We, we don't have the population and we don't have the tax base to match their salaries, although I know they're, they're in our market. And I've always believed that there are... And I've always believed that there are benefits to working for a small town that are not monetary. And that employee would want to be in the small town as opposed to working for a large town. So that was the only thing. I wondered why maybe they weren't put in that averages.
I know part of the focus that we had, Matthew, was on golf courses. And sure. And then I have some, yeah, I've got one more for you.
Sure. I think one of the reasons that we look at other municipalities like Greensboro, High Point, Guilford County is that they're in our marketplace. If I'm trying to recruit or retain good employees, the top employees that we have here, I have to be cognizant of the fact that they could just drive five minutes over into Greensboro, High Point, or Guilford County and work for them. So we try to remain competitive in our market. We don't look at places like Oak Ridge, Stokesdale, those types of places because they don't offer the same types of services that we do. We don't have water, sewer, streets, sanitation. They just don't have the same services. Just answer that. Thanks.
And thank you. I'm not familiar with those smaller places.
Oh, that's a good thank you. But that's very true. There's a difference. But then it also said that you would be doing a review of the personnel manual. Is that something you have done or you're going to do?
We have done that and.
And you have no recommendations for?
Well, there were some recommendations in the personnel policy that had been made. And that has been provided to the town. And we're shortly going to be able to set up some meetings to discuss where they might want to settle on.
Tonight on that.
Oh, no, ma'am. No, ma'am.
That's what I was getting at. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. And just to add to your question about the smaller jurisdictions, we do know that, with all due respect to Judy, the finance director in Jamestown might be a little bit different than the finance director in a Greensboro or Winston-Salem. The salaries are going to be different. We have to take into account those types of changes, particularly at department head levels. We do want to be as competitive and as close as we can, but we do.
Understand there is a difference in the market.
Yes. Okay, thank you.
Any more questions, counsel?
No, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you.
Matthew?
To make sure I'm on the right topic.
Pinecroft-Sedgefield.
So we've discussed this item for several months now. The Pinecroft-Sedgefield lease agreement for six thousand seven Westgate City Boulevard. I'm going to turn this over to Beth. I'm going to let her speak about it. But just to say that this item's been under review by both town attorney and attorney's representatives for Pinecroft-Sedgefield. And at this time, we probably would recommend to the council that they continue to work on that without us continuing to continue the meetings, if that makes sense. And then we will re-advertise that once the parties have reached an agreement. But I'm going to actually turn it over to Beth.
Well, do we need to vote to table it until a future date?
No, I don't want to table until a future date. I would prefer just to let that expire at this meeting. We're not going to continue it. Then that way, we will just re-advertise it at a future date when we know that both parties have an agreement that they can agree on. So agree, agree, and continue to continue. Beth, I'll let you speak to that. Thanks.
In working through this lease, we've actually got a ground lease that both parties have been reviewing. We've reviewed, Derek and his folks have reviewed it. What's a little bit of fly in the ointment is we're trying to come up with a fair way to, when the lease is terminated, how we deal with the value of any improvements that are at that time located on the property. Pinecroft-Sedgefield is quite understandably concerned about that because they're the ones that are going to be building the fire station. They're the ones that are going to be maintaining the property. What's causing the main issue is that when the state deeded the property to Jamestown with the idea that we would then work out something with Pinecroft-Sedgefield for them to build their fire station, the state included a clause that we see not infrequently in deeds from the state of North Carolina that is basically what we call in title trade, a reversionary clause. And what it says is, is that Jamestown has to use the property for a public purpose. At the time that they cease to use it as a public purpose, it automatically reverts to the state. So the issue that that's causing for us is that Pinecroft-Sedgefield at the termination of the lease or what they're really worried about is not so much if it goes for the full term of the lease, which is about ninety years. They have thirty-year renewals. Is if something were to happen between Pinecroft and Jamestown, we no longer needed their services for whatever reason. And they get terminated, they build a fire station on our property, then what happens? Of course, what's causing the issue is if we pay for improvements, that's fine. But at that point, if we cannot use it as a fire station and do not intend to use it as a fire station and there is no other public purpose for which it is suited, then we can't sell it to a bank or something to locate a bank there or some other commercial use. It goes right back to the state of North Carolina. I have come up with a couple of ideas about how we might address that issue. It's not perfect. And I'm still working through it. I have consulted with a colleague of mine who is chief claims counsel for Chicago Title, who insures quite a bit of our property when we purchase it. And she is giving me some guidance as to some things we might be able to try. So I'm still putting the fine touches on that. And then when I get it to the point where I think it might have some legs, then I'll review it with Matthew, review it with Judy and Faith, and then send it on over to Derek to see what he and his group think of it. It's just ended up being a lot more complicated than I think any of us had counted on.
Well, is Pinecroft-Sedgefield, any kind of timeframe, time limit, deadline that you've got to? Okay.
Thank you, Beth.
Well, the devil's in the details, isn't it?
It is absolutely in the details, no doubt. Thank you.
Thank you, Beth.
Jamie, do you have a golf maintenance report for us?
Excuse me. Been sitting a while. Good evening, mayor and councils. Good to see y'all again. We'll start off with, we've done a lot of tree work around the golf course. A lot of the dead trees around the golf course. There were several of them. We rented a chipper and we cut those down and chipped up the brush, moved the logs to a staging area and using the mulch for other opportunities around the golf course to condition soil and things of that nature. In the shop, we're currently working on some brooms for our rollers. When we sand the greens, most time, after we finish sanding, we use another employee, hook up a broom and broom the sand in the greens, in the canopy of the greens. We manufactured brooms that go on our roller. So when we roll the greens, we're also brooming the sand in the greens. That frees up an employee, saves some time and saves on labor as well. Mulch areas, we keep applying mulch in certain areas that used to be rock, dirt. We just continue to do that and over time, it would decompose. And we're working on getting grass in those areas. But right now, I think that's the best opportunity for us to condition the soil. Pre-emerge, we got all our pre-emerge out and that went well. The new sprayer we got is working really well. Had a little, few hiccups with it in the beginning, but everything's working great now. Which takes us to bunker sand. We do have some bunker sand coming in that's en route now to address some of those spots like Richard showed up on the screen, to get some of that fabric out. And we constantly cut that fabric out of that bunker. But every time we rake the bunker, it exposes more fabric. And we do order sand and we're going to start putting sand into bunkers. But that sand doesn't go very far. Like one load, we'll do about one bunker. But we are working on it to try to make them look well as best as we can without redoing all the bunkers. The restroom areas, we had demoed all the restroom areas. And we had to cut some large trees down, about five trees down around the bathrooms. We got those taken out. We did that in-house. It saved us some costs. We didn't contract that out. And that brings us to the building, the new building. The roof did come in.
Really?
Yes, we got that going for us.
I'm a father every day and look.
Yeah, it's not up yet, but we're very close. They're installing brackets right now for the insulation to go up under the roof. And after they get the insulation up, they will start putting the roof panels up. And I spoke with Brandon today and he said that it could be installed as early as Friday this week.
Wow.
But if not then Wednesday, they'll probably have it up. And then they'll start on the insulation and inside electrical work and things of that nature. We did clear out an area inside one of the bays in our shop that we installed some block. So we put our green sand that we put on the greens inside that area. So it keeps it dry. That makes it easily spreadable. And it just makes life a whole lot easier and plus gives us another area so we can stage sand. So we can have bunker sand over here and green sand over here. So that will make things go by pretty good. And lightning hit our irrigation again. Of course, we have irrigation problems. We fix those constantly. We put a lot of man-hours in those, in the irrigation. But it took out a board in the office. But with the coverage we had that Judy and I got, it's covered. So we don't have to spend that money to get that repaired. And we'll be here tomorrow and we will be back up and running on irrigation. So any questions that I may answer?
So golf courses tend to be like a natural lightning rod for one reason or another.
Yes.
Is there, I mean, we've had a couple of hits in the same general vicinity. Has there been any discussion about maybe a lightning rod or something that could maybe draw off as opposed to our electronics?
Yeah, really.
I'm curious.
It hit a tree, split the tree, the lightning rod, and busted a pipe as well. Went through the irrigation wires, they're copper. So it was just a.
In other words, no. There's no way.
It's an ongoing process.
Yeah, pretty much. Pretty much. Do what you do. That's all it comes down to.
Thank you, Jamie.
Thanks, Jamie.
Thank you.
And Matthew, you have a special events permit?
My advice, if you're on the golf course and it starts a lightning, is to leave.
I'm not going to be out there, especially, I mean, I need like a windmill between me and the hole anyway.
So the town was approached by the High Point Arts Council. They've noticed the success that we've had with our music in the park events. And they're going to be doing their own event called Arts Splash, which is a summer concert series throughout the community. Of course, included in High Point. But they wanted to reach out to us and they wanted to see if they could take their Arts Splash concert series that they're doing in public parks around the High Point community and bring it here to the Rem Miller Park. They have selected June the twenty-third. They would like to host an hour and a half concert. So it differs from ours a little bit. They would like to ask the council if they could, number one, do that event, but also if they could allow us to have our employees to help with the garbage, solid waste removal. They would take care of all the other facets, including the music, vendors, portable toilets, off-duty officers, et cetera. We told them that we would be willing to provide the staffing for the solid waste collections, pending approval of the special events permit. So at this point, we're just asking for a conditional approval of the vent based on their request that would allow us to go ahead and follow up with them. They've already given us a copy of their insurance, but their ABC permits, some hold harmless agreements, and music and vendor information that we'd like to get from them. They weren't willing to do that work until we said it was going to be okay, which I understand. So if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Yeah, that's all I was going to say is normally we have a detailed plan showing all those items and it's in the ordinance what all we need from them. But, and of course, the tax exempt letter and the insurance are two big things. But anyhow, if you're comfortable that they will give you all those detailed things.
Yes.
Prior to, then.
Absolutely. And it's listed on the back of their permit of what they actually owe us. And they've indicated they can get all of that. They just wanted to make sure it was going to be okay before they did the legwork for that.
Sure.
Well, I would be fine to approve the special events permit for the Arts Splash, a conditional approval for that Arts Splash, summer concert.
Second?
On favor?
Aye.
All puce.
Thank you.
Thank you. Judy, would you do the presentation on the one percent discount for early payment on property taxes?
So the Guilford County Tax Department sends out tax notices in July of each year, including those for town of Jamestown residents. The town contracts with Guilford County to bill and collect on taxes for the property within the town jurisdiction. Currently, both Guilford County and Jamestown offer a point five percent discount on taxes which are paid in July or August. Taxes are due September first and the last day to pay these is generally around the first few days of January. We were contacted by Guilford County just a couple of days ago and their commissioners had voted to double the discount rate from point five percent to one percent. This change will take effect for them on July first, pending Department of Revenue approval. So they contacted us to see if we were interested in following along with the increase in the tax discount. So the caveat was, we had to decide this by May first and had to let them know. That is a state requirement evidently. So we've been kind of trying to look into this a little bit. Greensboro did a resolution and so we kind of followed their resolution and you should have it attached. That would give Jamestown, you know, for us to implement the same increase as Guilford County did from point five percent to one percent. For a home that's with an estimated value of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, the amount of the discount at the current rate of point five percent would be six dollars and six cents. At the one percent discount amount, that would double it to twelve dollars and twelve cents. So we also tried to estimate what this increase would potentially cost the town. So we are absorbing now the point five percent increase. And if we doubled that in the new year, effective July first, we estimated that it would cost the town about ten thousand dollars for that increased amount of discount.
Is that based on historical collections between July first and August thirty-first?
It's based in part on last year's discount amount for July and August. And then at the tax rate that we are proposing, that would be approximately the amount that we think. You know, we never, you don't know for sure if somebody's going to. You know, we never, you don't know for sure if somebody's going to take the discount or not. So it's just a...
Each year is different.
Yes.
Probably, yeah.
So if you want to implement the discount, increase in the discount rate, I would ask that you approve the resolution to do so.
Since Guilford County collects our taxes for us, or they wanting us to do this? Or do they not care?
It's our decision.
Okay. They're not, okay.
No, they didn't push one way or other to do it.
All right.
Any questions for Judy?
No.
Okay.
Motion to approve the resolution adopting a 1% discount for early payment of property taxes.
Second? On favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Matthew, our preliminary budget.
So one of the things that we talked about at the budget workshop on the 14th, that was just a few days ago, last Friday, I, we thought it would be beneficial for the folks that are here this evening and those watching at home to hear a little bit about our budget process before we present the actual budget. So this will be a little bit of a review for you as council members. Just bear with me. We started by taking a look at the town's mission. Our mission says, creating an exceptional quality of life for all citizens by providing superior services. So with that in mind, we've actually been working on the budget a little, almost four months. Our staff prepared a budget which outlines our needs for the 2023-24 fiscal year. The process began back in January, January 21st, with our first budget workshop with the council. At that particular meeting, we started looking at our capital improvements program. Those are the big capital items that we want to do over the next year. And we discussed that with the council. And priorities were given to staff by the council. Our department heads then met with Judy and Faith and Katie and myself during the week of February the 27th through the March 1st, March 1st date to discuss their operating budget needs. The council continued to work on the budget with meetings on both March 23rd and again on April 14th. The need for fee increases was discussed at those meetings. And the consensus was that some fee increases would be prudent to resolve mounting pressures against our general fund. The general fund is the fund where our taxpayer dollars flow into. Judy and Faith have worked very, very hard to resolve some, to prepare a balanced budget. And despite some challenges, they have done that. And within the last week or so, Judy came into our offices and brought to our attention that our proposed expenses would exceed our expected revenues by nearly $1.5 million. Some of that reason is the cost of goods and services have been increasing rapidly. Expected revenues from sales tax, franchise tax, and other sources has a little bit diminished. So immediately, we went back to work. We sat down at the table, went through the budget line by line, and worked to remove or to defer, and you'll hear me say that again, costs and projects to help reduce the disparity between the revenues and expenditures. So we've removed the following items from the proposed 23-24 budget and are deferring them into a future year. That does not eliminate our need for those items. It just makes our future budgeting even more difficult. We've taken out a tractor and implement from Golf Maintenance to save $108,000, a lane marker from Recreation for $41,000, and the Ren Miller Park bathrooms, which is also from Recreation, for a total of $450,000. This reduced our disparity by almost $600,000, at $599,000. We then looked at deferring the Penny Road sidewalk project by at least one year for $190,000. We looked at removing the fees for the architects for the Pine Cross Edgefield Fire Department, Fire Station improvements. After having talked to Chief Carson, I didn't do that without talking to him first. That saved another $50,000 for next year. So that brings us to $839,000 in reduced expenditures for fiscal year 23-24, leaving us with a budget deficit of nearly $700,000. At the suggestion of several council members, staff took a closer look at the golf course budget. Having just completed the strategic plan and sitting down with that in hand, the staff reviewed areas where losses were occurring and made a very difficult decision to recommend a reduction in force of two positions at the golf course. The estimated savings, all things being said after the end of that, would be approximately $150,000. That includes salary benefits, reduction in expenses at the grill and accounts for the payouts of vacation time, reduced grill revenues, and reduced expenses related to those positions. So that leaves the town finance department with a budget deficit now of approximately $550,000. As you know, the town only receives revenue from a couple of major sources. And just for simplicity's sake, those are the sale of goods and services like water and sewer or tax revenues. To balance the budget, the staff is recommending a 10-cent tax increase with one penny of tax equating to approximately $60,000. The budget before you does not include a provision to increase fund balance. As you know, it will become necessary for us to increase the fund balance. Our fund balance is essentially, Judy, don't hit me. It's essentially our savings account. And we're using that fund balance for capital projects in case of an emergency. You know, if, if the building collapsed and we needed to rebuild it, it would have to come from fund balance. So we are looking at a requirement for us to increase fund balance within a three-year window per our adopted policies. So this means that next year's budget may be equally challenging. Staff are going to be making every effort to reduce spending in every way possible. And I'm going to say this, we do that anyway. As a municipality, we run extremely lean. We do not spend money frivolously. Council, the staff, and the public may be asking us, you know, how did we get into this position? That answer is rather complex and contains a lot of different factors as there's just no one particular thing to blame. Rather, it's a reflection of all of these events as a whole. Just a few of those include, those issues include the deferment. And that's a theme that you've been hearing tonight. You're hearing that from our golf course consultant. The deferment of projects for six-plus years between 2016 and 2021 is one of the main issues that plagues us. Deferment is not our friend. It puts us in a very precarious position going forward. COVID. COVID led to supply chain issues. We couldn't get necessary equipment in a timely manner. We weren't able to get that in a way that would allow us to finance it. You know, we could not keep those finance rates because it was taking so long to receive them. That squeezed a lot of different purchases into our, you know, one budget year. We see inflation. We've heard that again this evening, that we're experiencing some of the greatest pressures for cost of goods and services since 2008, 2009, including the increase in interest rates for those financing abilities. A lack of periodic tax increases and fee increases to keep pace with our costs. I recognize that that is not a particular popular thing for a board to face, but it is something that we need to consider as we move forward. Again, inflationary pressures have been increasing sharply in the past 12 to 18 months. I wanted to point out, and I know you have it in your packet, there's not been a tax increase for our operating account since 2008, 2009, that fiscal year. There is a chart that shows all of those historic tax rates, including the increases and the causes for those increases over the last 20 years. The rates that are in there that are included, you know, increases are what we call pass-through. Those are things that we pass through because they hit us. We pass them on to the consumer. The majority of those have come from public safety, the sheriffs and the fire departments. And that's a total of eight and a half cents over that period of time. There was one increase of two cents to help fund capital projects like our golf clubhouse renovation. But only in 2008, 2009 did we increase our operating budget with a tax increase of two cents. And if you remember, 2008, 2009 was also a period of high inflationary pressure. Some of the other things that have contributed to this issue, lack of maintenance of assets. That's not that we don't take care of our assets. It's just that we've not funded or completed projects. Streets, stormwater, water and sewer, all of those things contribute to increase pressure on our budget. Legal fees, the issues with ordinance enforcement, which we need to do, working through the development agreement with the Ar Horton. And we have several public records requests that require a lot of legal fees for us to, that we incur. There are other unfunded mandates, stormwater. You heard about that this evening. You also heard about, if you're listening to Mr. Frank, he said Gatsby 87 and Gatsby 96. These are accounting mandates. These are things that we have to do that require a lot more time and effort on behalf of our accounting staff. We've had to get different types of software to deal with that as well. We're experiencing growth. We've had to hire employees due to growth, due to retirements. It's necessary for us to change operations, which we probably should have looked at years before. The biggest example of that is the solid waste collection, which has gone exceedingly well. I want to say that citizens have done a tremendous job. We really appreciate them working with us and being patient. So that's gone very, very well. Recruitment and retention. As I, as you heard from Cheryl a little bit earlier, the need to do pay classifications and to continue to pay our employees correctly is of extreme importance. The Society for Human Resource Management, SHRM, indicates that the cost to replace an employee is between 50% to 60% of their salary, with overall costs ranging anywhere from 90% to 200% of their annual salary. So for an employee making $60,000, the cost to replace them averages somewhere between $30,000 and $45,000 just for replacement. But also, looking at the overall losses to the organization, they're estimating that somewhere between $54,000 and $120,000. Institutional knowledge is something that we pride ourselves on. We have a longevity of, we have a lot of longevity here in the Town of Jamestown. We have had some folks retire. And we have a younger group of employees. But we are bringing them through that process very quickly to let them know where things are and how things are done. The use of fund balance to complete capital projects that we've needed to do, the golf maintenance building, $1 million, golf bathrooms, $250,000, town hall renovations, $380,000, and the purchase of two solid waste vehicles for $1 million in total. However, I want to say, after all of that, the news is not all grim. The town staff have also secured over $3.5 million, again, $3.5 million in grant funding just in this past year alone. So that represents nearly half of our general fund budget. And this is going to fund new sidewalk projects, stormwater repairs at the golf course, and a complete overhaul of the Jamestown Park to include age and ability-inclusive playgrounds, fitness equipment, dog parks, natural play areas, shelter improvements, volleyball and basketball renovations. So in closing, the town's mission is to create an exceptional quality of life for all of our citizens by providing superior services. Those services have become more expensive to provide. And staff have worked extremely, extremely hard to provide and continue to provide the very best services to our citizens. And we will pull through this challenging time. Our tax base is poised for growth. So we've implemented strategies to help deal with the growth. And we will be a stronger community for our investments now and the hard decisions to move forward. I'm going to say these things. This is some wise words from Dave Trimm, who often said that the rearview mirror in your car is a lot smaller than the windshield for a reason. And that's because we are moving forward. I will conclude my talk. But I am going to ask Judy to come and present the budget to you. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
I'm bringing Faith up here as a reinforcement, so... Just going to do a quick summary of what we are proposing in the, in the budget. And that would be a COLA of 4%, merit of 0% to 3%. As Matt mentioned, there is, we are proposing a workforce reduction of two positions. As far as retirement, the state tells us what we have to pay. There will be an increase, slight increase, from the current rate of 12.5% to 12.89% next year. 401K, we will maintain the contribution of 5%. Health insurance is expected to increase approximately 2.5%. We do have a couple of new positions, some that we have already hired. And that would be a grant administrator and assistant public services director. And we have found someone to be an assistant to the town clerk from time to time as needed. The proposed rates for next year, this will be the tax increase of 10 cents. A proposed stormwater fee for half of the year, to be implemented if approved in January. And this would be $5 per month for a residential home. That is the minimum amount. Proposed motor vehicle fee of $30 annually per car. The water rate would be an increase of 4%. That is to match the purchase increases from our partners at the Water Authority, Randleman Water Authority, and the City of High Point. The sewer rate is proposed to increase approximately 30%. That again is to pass through the match from the City of High Point for the wastewater treatment plant, of which we are a partner. And from what they said, that is to, due to increases in chemical costs as well as personnel costs. The monthly fee for garbage and recycling is proposed to increase by $2.50. The Pine Cross Edgefield fire district rates are proposed to stay the same at this, at this point. The projects that are proposed in the budget and is, our stormwater expert was talking about earlier, we will have our stormwater audit this year and inspection. So we have $50,000 in the budget to cover those costs as well as potential things that we have to jump on right away and correct. The, in the general fund, we are proposing some new mowers at the golf course for $344,000. And those, since the, it takes so long to get these in, pretty much over a year, we had to go ahead and commit to those in this fiscal year. And they will be here at some point next fiscal year. We are proposing to buy a snowplow for $9,000 and a spreader sprayer for recreation in the amount of $16,000. In the water sewer fund, we have budgeted $943,000 for Eastside Wastewater Treatment Plant improvements, which is our share of those improvements that the city will be doing, City of High Point will be doing. We are proposing to do sewer slip lining in the amount of $650,000. Other sewer projects for $100,000. Main Street and other water line projects, $1,006,000. And to purchase a service truck for the water and sewer department. We are proposing not to use any fund balance to balance the budget at this point in the general fund. Water sewer fund, however, we are proposing to use approximately $1,900,000 to balance the budget in the water sewer department as there are some, some big amounts there for the projects as mentioned above. And we do have ongoing improvements at Eastside Wastewater Treatment Plant. And we'll in the future have some big improvements to the Water Authority, the Randleman Reservoir. That's about it. That's about it, I'll be answered, answer questions. Do you have questions?
Well, Chris, I always question, have we budgeted enough for attorney fees?
We think so, hopefully.
Okay. And I just want to revisit, of course, fortunately, Councilor Strong had to leave, and he's the only one who hasn't heard this because y'all haven't heard it from me, that I'm not in favor of the $30 motor vehicle fee due to all the facts that we've just given the town is facing, and inflation and cost of living, and so are the taxpayers when they're looking at their facts for their income and figuring their budgets. And with the other fees and tax increases that we are doing, that $30 is not going to affect this budget that we're working on because we're doing a pavement project this fiscal year and not the next year. So only thing, then, the paving that would be budgeted in the 20, what is that, 24, 25, would be the allowable POW bill funding that we get from the state. So, in my mind, we cannot charge that $30 and not affect anything else.
One of the things about the automobile fee that, I mean, we've talked about it, and I think it's important to re-cover this a little bit, is based on the POW bill, how little bit of road we have that we can cover just based on the amount of monies we get there. I'll quote something I heard from Paul or Matthew, probably both of them, but I think it was 64 years at the rate we're going to actually rehab all of our roads, and then we just start all over again to get it done. And that's predicated on that the other roads will last that long. We have some areas like Whittington Hall that came up all at one time, and we're seeing those areas, you know, understandably based on traffic, degrading at the same time. I think that, you know, personally, I don't like spending one more dime when it comes to taxes, fees, or anything else along those lines. But I think it's our fundamental responsibility to look at maintaining all of our assets in this town. And that's the thing that it always comes back to from the constituents and from people who pass through, and just in general, is that they love the services, they love the town, they love the facets of the town. And with the understandably high costs that are going up on all goods at this point, we have to be able to still maintain those expectations. And part of, you know, good, bad, or indifferent, part of our responsibility here is to maintain the business of Jamestown and maintain the facets within it, in addition to trying to do what we can, listen to our constituents and trying to take all that in kind. I'm not in love with it either, but by that same token, I also understand why we've gone in the direction we've gone in. And I appreciate the effort y'all have gone into to try to pull this stuff together.
Did you have anything you'd like to add, Rebecca?
I mean, well, one thing Councilman Cates didn't mention, but that I really appreciated that you did. Mayor, I think at a previous budget meeting was how automobile tax or fee would allow renters, provide them the opportunity to pay into something in a way that property taxes don't typically get them, so.
Very good point.
And Judy had, from our last meeting, you had an increase in the number of vehicles in town, I believe, from what we were presented last week?
Yes, approximately 3,800, which would result in about $114,000 per year. And that would be reserved for street improvements only.
I had a couple of specific questions, so we might have to look through the budget there. But it's in the general fund, and it was line 3,500 repairs and maintenance, and it says replace a water heater at $40,000. Surely other things are included in that, I'm assuming. And I said, I know that's putting you on the spot trying to find, it would be page five of 22, I guess, in the general fund, line item 3,500.
Yeah, that's just, that's a, that's a general amount, the $40,000 for other repairs. That was just one instance that we knew of.
That's quite a water heater.
Yes, no, that will go for many other things.
Yeah, okay.
As needed.
And then, oh, let's see, because we haven't, you know, had a chance to go through these with you. There was one other, let me see if I have that.
While you're looking for that, Matthew, could you come up for a minute? I know we had some things that we've talked about, you know, relative to the, both the automobile fee and also with the other details that have been shared by Judy. Did you have anything you want to contribute to that? Deal with the, sorry about that. Deal with the automobile fee and deal with the increases that we're talking about relative to, you know.
The motor vehicle.
Right. Did you have anything else you want to contribute to that?
You asked about some of the information, and Paul may be the best to say this, but I'll kind of parrot what he has said to us. The better the road, the longer that we can, the more distance we can get when we go to resurface it. So the longer we let it sit, the longer we defer our maintenance, the less we can do. So, in our current status, we're getting from POW bill, that's state return tax from gas tax, based on our population and number of miles. We have about 16 and a half or so miles of road that we maintain, we are responsible for maintaining. We get about $100,000 from the state each year to do that. So that's why we try to do contracts every other year. The $100,000 that we get will pave about 1,300 feet of streets on average. Again, the better the condition overall, the better the subsurface is, a little bit further we can go with that money. $114,000, we go a long ways. And I wanted to say that, we've talked about this for, I don't know, six, seven years, we could have had that in our budget now. And you'll see in just a little bit when we talk about opening bids and making recommendations that it's a very expensive proposition for us to do a very tiny bit of street paving. Paul is always jostling what he has to choose to let go. And quite frankly, we're running behind on street paving. And I said this to you during the budget retreat, it's not something that's flashy, it's not sexy for us to maintain streets, but it is something that our citizens do expect us to do, and expect us to do it well. Looking out at, if we deferred it, you know, again, deferment is our enemy. If we deferred that and we didn't institute it, it would be 2027. Let's say we, you say, for example, now we could do it next year. If you did it next year, it would be 2027 before we could implement that fee to use it in our, in our street surfacing contract. So it just puts you further and further and further behind. Did you have any other questions?
Just one, as it relates to, you know, just on the time I've served on the council, which, I don't know, five years, six years at this point, we've deferred this every single year. It's been a discussion every single year, and we've tried in good faith to not put it out there, you know, presumptuously or in some way that, you know, we've got a lot of people out there that say, look, I don't want to pay another dime, I understand, I feel the same way, I live here too. But, correct me if I'm wrong, didn't we work up a number if we'd done it, let's say, five years ago, six years ago, how much that would have added up to roughly, just that we could be working off today?
Last time we looked at it in earnest, and Judy can correct me if I'm wrong, was we estimated around $90,000.
Right.
But now we have more vehicles, so we're somewhere around $114,000. And they told us that that's a conservative number. Certainly, we're going to see an expansion in roadways, you know, things that we're going to have to take care of. And certainly, my opinion would be that before that growth occurs, like to go ahead and have that in place that you can get that revenue stream established and use that instead of unduly trying to.
Play catch-up.
Play catch-up with property tax or things like that.
All right.
That's our only other source of revenue, so.
Gotcha.
That answer your questions?
It does, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Back to, it'd be page 11 of 22, line item, I think it's 4,990, other contracted services. And it's installation of gates, I just wonder where those gates are.
Those would be two gates that would essentially separate the recreation area from the golf course.
Oh, okay. Then my other questions are, I guess, on the CIP, just a couple. Of course, I had, well, let me go through this, and then I had a question for Paul. All of my questions are for Paul on the CIP. I wanted to know on the water sewer fund, on the other water line projects, what actual projects are included in that? Does he know?
Yes, the Penny Road Water Line, which is on this side of Penny Road in the shoulder.
Well, we've got Penny Road Water Line listed as a project, but then we've got other water line projects.
I'm sorry.
I think we just put that in there, there usually, things come up during the year.
Just for if something.
So we basically did that for water and sewer, just for any projects that may come up.
If there's a lake or.
Is that based on historical data?
Yes.
Or something like that.
I mean, there's usually some project during the year that comes up that we need to work on, so.
Okay. Then I was wondering, we've got in here on the stormwater project, street improvement that we've pushed out a year, again, this is for Paul, I think it's $142,000, which I think is the Forest Dale East Stormwater Project. I just wondered when the grant person begins work, which I think is April the 24th, if she could look into, they claim there's federal grants for stormwater projects now.
That would be an excellent idea, and it is that Forest Dale East project.
Okay, I just wondered if that would be a way to get that, you know. And supposedly, they are familiar with federal grants, I think have experience in it, so that would be a number one, I think, because they claim that now is the time to be talking about it. And then this is, we talked about this, and I want to make sure I understood it, again, for Paul, it's in the current budget to do the painting of the crosswalks. And I wanted to know, did we decide not to do those while, until the Main Street Water Line Project was completed?
I thought we discussed that in the budget meeting.
I think we did.
I thought we were going to discuss that in the budget meeting last week.
Well, I'm just asking him what.
I thought you'd answered it, okay.
We have not tried to put it under contract. I do hate to spend that money knowing that we're going to trench through it, but the ones in the most need are right in the path. I mean, it's the Oakdale Intersection.
Well, yeah, I would, yeah, Gannaway, and, but, you know, I keep talking about how talented our public services staff is. Is that something that they could do in-house as far as contracting it out?
That is very specialty, it's a lot of traffic control, but it's also the products.
Okay. All right, that was it.
There's a long two questions.
Excuse me?
So there's a long two questions.
Ethan, did you have any questions, only things specific?
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies.
Now, we'll mention one thing, this is called the preliminary budget. So that means it can change before we come back next month.
Do you want to go ahead and request the public hearing?
Yes.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We would like to request to set the public hearing date for the recommended budget and CIP for fiscal year 2324 for the May 16th Town Council Meeting.
Do I have a motion?
I move that we set a public hearing date for the recommended budget and CIP for fiscal year 2324 to the May 16th Town Council Meeting at 6:00 PM in the Civic Center.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
And Paul, resurfacing contracts.
I'm ordering pizza next time.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's hard to follow the budget, I mean. We opened bids for the 2022-23 resurfacing contract yesterday. It'd been available for about, I think, I think, 28 or 28, 30 days they'd been available. We had three bidders, we were fortunate. The same four bidders that were involved last time were involved two combined. The low bidder is Wog Asphalt Inc. with a bid of $403,546.03. And it compared well with my estimate of $398,396. But I don't like to be the low bidder, and I was lower than them, sorry about that. But this year, we have $300,000 from the POW bill for the resurfacing contract. The remaining $103,546.03 would come from water and sewer, because of course we're raising manholes or adjusting manholes and fixing valve boxes. And most of our patchwork is related to water and sewer. The three bids were, Wog Asphalt, as I said, $403,546.03. Blythe Construction Inc. and Haynes Construction Company, we're going to work together. Their bid was $469,461.95. And Sharp Brothers, their bid was $520,261.64. And I respectfully request that the Town Council consider awarding this contract to the lowest responsive responsible bidder.
One quick question. So, in terms of the monies from the POW bill, we have an overage at this point because we didn't spend it in the past year, is that correct?
Correct.
Yes, their rules are very specific. They, we get two distributions a year.
Right.
It's, I believe, October and January? And whatever amount we're getting, we are allowed to accumulate up to 10 times, is it the smallest of those, or 10 times of the one we're getting? So we are allowed to accumulate some funds, which we've been fortunate to do, but.
The only reason I ask is just as we just went through that from a budgeting standpoint, if anybody is actually watching this or listening, I just want to make sure we make the clarification on that. That's the only reason I ask, thank you.
Yes, we did, that is more than we would receive in a budget year.
Very good.
Thank you. Do I have a motion, Council?
Yes, motion to award the 2023 resurfacing contract, forgive me, I can't speak English, to the lowest responsive responsible bidder, Wog Asphalt Incorporated, in the amount of $403,546.03.
Second.
And authorize the town manager, sorry. I'm working on it. And authorize the town manager and finance director to execute all documents.
I second the whole thing.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, Paul.
Thank you very much.
Matthew, do you have your manager's report for us?
So, yes. The Town Council held their final budget workshop, as I said, on Friday, April 14th. And as you've heard, we are facing a difficult budget. But I need to take a few minutes and thank all of the staff, every department head, every member of our staff, specifically Judy and Faith, for working on this budget. It has been really difficult to get the information, and things are changing even now, the changing last minute. So I want to publicly thank the members of the council and the staff who have worked to bring our citizens the very best services and amenities for the lowest cost possible. Goal number 5.4 of our strategic plan is to evaluate the effectiveness of our current solid waste collection and recycling services. And we began collections on April 11th and 12th utilizing trash cans. Calls to Town Hall have been reasonable, and it appears that most residents have adapted quickly and adopted the new schedules. We encourage our residents to continue to visit our website at JamestownCandoo-nc.gov to find out information about the new collection. And I wanted to thank the Girl Scout Troop 30066 for their assistance in distributing cans and information to residents along Gannaway and Ragsdale.
And that was a great news spot on Fox 8 with them.
It was fantastic. I'm glad they didn't just talk to me, it was fantastic to get the scouts out there. That was, it was encouraging to see them, they're working on the bronze award, and it relates to environmentalism. So, really appreciate their participation. I also want to take a moment to thank the folks on our sanitation crew, Chris Pierce, our driver, Tyler Humble's been working with him to learn the route and learn the new equipment. That's on the new automated machine. That's on the, the new automated machine. Also, we have, we have Mike and Dylan on the back of our recycling truck, who's been driven by, that's been driven by Philip Cooper. So we really appreciate them. They've worked really hard to make sure that this has gone seamlessly, and it's gone very well, so. We observed Arbor Day on Friday, March 24th, along the walkway through the pedestrian bridge along East Fork Road. Anna and Scott coordinated that event. It culminated with the presentation of our 15th Annual Tree City USA Award. And again, Girl Scout Troop 30066 assisted with the planting of those trees, again, as they're working on their bronze award. And they appear to be flourishing. They look really good. We'll continue to add to that over the, over the years with Arbor Day. I think that will make a nice shady area for people who are walking down on East Fork Road. National Volunteer Week is April 16th through the 22nd. If you'll stay tuned to our social media platforms, both Facebook and Instagram, we're going to have some very special content centered on volunteerism here in Jamestown. Those are going to air every morning at 8:00 AM. And if you wish to volunteer, please be sure to contact Katie, our Assistant Manager and Town Clerk, for an application. We have a lot of different things that you can serve on, and we appreciate our volunteers. There are several major projects, just to give you an update. The Golf Course Strategic Plan, you heard this evening. It represents the completion of, of goal 5.8 in the council's strategic plan. The maintenance building that you heard about from Jamie is, it's currently under construction. That's goal 5.6. We believe that the estimated completion now is going to be around July of this year. Town Hall renovations are currently underway. That's goal 5.5. They're out here today doing some concrete preparation. And the golf course bathrooms, demolition's complete, and construction should begin soon, and that's goal 5.10. Also, takes a few minutes to add a couple of things here. Music in the Park will begin Friday, May the 5th at 6:00 PM. Goes from 6:00 to 10:00 PM, and it features Dante's Roadhouse. We're going to have a special addition this year to all of our events. Weathervein Winery will be joining us as long as, as well as Four Saints Brewing. There's many different food vendors as well. Just check our Facebook events page. You can see all of those, all that information. Also, and Scott's not here this evening, but he wanted me to announce that the brand-new software called MyRec is now active. And if you go to the town's webpage under the, the top heading there, and it says, "I Want To", you click on that and drops down that tab. We'll have a little link there for Rent a Facility, and it'll take you right on over to the MyRec page. It's, it's great. He's already got a lot of dates on the calendar that's populated. You can see what's being rented and by whom and for how long. So that, you'll be able to take payments and reservations right over the internet for, for the different facilities, including the men and hall room over at the golf course. Couple of key dates, Saturday, this Saturday, April 22nd, from 9:00 to 11:00 AM. Litter Sweep will be going on. That's something that will, we, we do a couple of times a year. I would encourage you to call Town Hall and ask for Elizabeth Greason. She can help you coordinate that and get you all set up. And finally, our right next regularly scheduled Town Council Meeting, 6:00 PM here in the Civic Center, May the 16th. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I'd just like to say the videos, I've seen them on Instagram, but they're very good as far as the volunteers we've had. I've seen Ed Stafford and Pam Burgess, and, I mean, just in general, the videos are quite good.
We have, we have several more to go this week. They were sitting in that seat. Is that what you?
I know they were, and somebody broke my chair. We're going to have to talk.
It did not, it didn't eject them.
I'll still Martha's or something.
Yeah, I saw those on Facebook. I've seen two of them, and they are very good.
Right, every, every morning at 8:00 AM throughout the rest of the week, we have a different volunteer to highlight.
Very well.
We have several different volunteers. It's just sometimes hard to get people to want to sit there on camera. I don't blame them.
Don't blame them a bit.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Matthew.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Council, do we have any committee reports?
Scott, sorry, I've got some.
No, you're fine.
The TAC did meet on March the 28th, and there were no changes in the projects for Jamestown. We still have the two projects for Oakdale Road and the Penny Road project. And Paul, I keep talking to you, I can't see you, but the, the let date for, for Oakdale Phase 3 is June of 30 of 2023. So I don't know if that is something that is still on schedule, or if you need to talk to Stephen. And also, the Penny Road project for the sidewalk curb and gutter is still showing a let date of September 2023, and I know that's one that we're pushing out. So I don't know if staff needs to talk to DOT.
Yes, Jason's actually has reached out to Stephen. And we're going to have to see if we can meet with Stephen and see what's the best way to address those dates, to get realistic dates that we, we feel comfortable with, particularly Penny Road.
Yeah, and still keep the funding, okay. And then there was a park meeting, and as people have mentioned, 2023 is the year of the trail that you talked about. And Park is going to have, using their social media and websites, they're doing a mapping of all the trails and where they are within a half-mile relationship to all of Park, which is bus terminals, of, of where people could ride. And as soon as they do that rollout, we can maybe post it on our Facebook page or our website page to give them some advertisement on the year of the trail. And they're also doing a free ride for the whole public on May the 26th. Anyone can ride for free on their Park buses. And again, they'll be getting that information out soon, and I hope maybe the town can, can publicize it on their Facebook as well, so. And they have Earth Day, April 22nd, at Winston-Salem Fairgrounds. And Park will be having a booth. It's free, and they'll have educational games for the kids and giveaways for kids and families.
Thank you. Do you have any?
They did not meet this month.
You did?
No meetings.
Katie, do we have anyone signed up for a public comment?
Nobody signed up.
Council, do I have a motion to go into closed session?
Could I have one other business?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Point, oh, that's okay. So last year, we did approve some changes to our sign ordinance. And kind of since then, I think some issues have maybe come up that the, the public has not been thrilled with. I've, I've noticed a few things as well. And so I was going to see if Anna may be able to kind of look back into that, looking at the sign ordinance, and especially as it relates to things that would preserve the look and feel of the downtown Main Street and historic areas, namely with digital signs or anything else that might kind of fall within that, that could make sure that we keep, especially that downtown area, looking more Jamestown-like and quaint.
Thank you. I think Anna's making notes.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll chime in with my two cents on one thing with the signage. If we do any updates on signage, has anybody ever thought about putting like a QR code within the sign? So if somebody's walking downtown, they could, you know, scan it and pull additional information? I'm just throwing it out there. Just a thought. I had a moment. It's late.
That could certainly be incorporated. We, of course, for freedom of speech, they can put whatever they want on a sign.
Got it.
Now, could I have a motion to go into closed session?
Motion to go into closed session per General Statute 143-318 to discuss matters related to attorney-client privilege, 301 Lee Street.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Thank you.